I hereby call the Palm Springs Special Joint City Council Boards, Commissions, and Committee Meetings of June 21, 2022 to order. At this time, I invite all who would like to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Here.
Mayor Middleton.
And Councilmember Holstages excused.
And Councilmember Holstages excused. Do we have any public testimony?
We have no registered speakers, madam, but one present in the room.
This time is set aside for members of the public to address the city council on agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Joy Brown Meredith, welcome.
Hi, my name is Joy Brown Meredith, and I am just here really to show support for all of these incredible volunteers here that volunteer, you know, every week or every other week or whatever those schedules are. You have people here that are from the age of fifteen to, okay, whatever that may be. But as a former Village Fest Commissioner and Parks and Rec Commissioner, my husband was on those commissions as well over the years. I know that there's a lot of time and love that goes into it. And it's just really impressive to see everybody get here that just put their love into this city. And so I just thought that this was a good time to say thank you to all of them for all the work and of course you as well. Thank you.
And do we have any other public speakers?
That concludes our list.
All right. With that, I will close the public speaking portion of the agenda. Again, on behalf of all of city council, I want to welcome you here this evening. It's been a very long time since we gathered all of the boards and commissions together. What we're going to try to do this evening is begin a conversation, a conversation around how do we make our boards and commissions more effective? How do we improve the conversation that takes place between city council and our various boards and commissions? We want to see you as our partners in helping to make this city the kind of city that we are trying all of us to achieve. And we're really pleased to have you here this evening. It is the first of what will be many upcoming conversations around how do we make ourselves more effective? From a procedural standpoint, we're going to give ten minutes to each commission. We're going to do so in alphabetical order. And once you finish your ten-minute presentation, and we're going to be pretty strict about the ten minutes, we're going to set aside five minutes for city council to ask questions of that commission. And I'm going to be really strict with my colleagues about the five minutes that we get. If there are things that we do not get to during that course of the Q and A, we will come back after every board has had an opportunity to present so that we can do follow-up. That achieves two things. One, it means that those on the airport commission have to stick around till the very end to make sure that we don't have any further follow-up questions. But it also means that we have an opportunity to give every commission an opportunity to make their presentation, and we don't get bogged down on Q and A with one commission early on while everybody else sits and waits. So again, ten minutes to do your presentation, an initial five-minute Q and A.
I hereby call the Palm Springs Special Joint City Council Boards, Commissions, and Committee Meetings of June 21, 2022 to order. At this time, I invite all who would like to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Here.
Mayor Middleton. And Councilmember Holstages excused.
And Councilmember Holstages excused. Do we have any public testimony?
We have no registered speakers, madam, but one present in the room.
All right. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Joy Brown Meredith, welcome.
Hi, my name is Joy Brown Meredith, and I am just here really to show support for all of these incredible volunteers here that volunteer, you know, every week or every other week or whatever those schedules are. You have people here that are from the age of fifteen to... Okay, whatever that may be. But as a former Village Fest Commissioner and Parks and Rec Commissioner, my husband was on those commissions as well over the years. I know that there's a lot of time and love that goes into it. And it's just really impressive to see everybody get here that just put their love into this city. And so I just thought that this was a good time to say thank you to all of them for all the work, and of course you as well. Thank you.
And do we have any other public speakers?
That concludes our list.
All right. With that, I will close the public speaking portion of the agenda. Again, on behalf of all of City Council, I want to welcome you here this evening. It's been a very long time since we gathered all of the boards and commissions together. What we're going to try to do this evening is begin a conversation, a conversation around how do we make our boards and commissions more effective? How do we improve the conversation that takes place between City Council and our various boards and commissions? We want to see you as our partners in helping to make this city the kind of city that we are trying, all of us, to achieve. And we're really pleased to have you here this evening. It is the first of what will be many upcoming conversations around how do we make ourselves more effective? From a procedural standpoint, we're going to give ten minutes to each commission. We're going to do so in alphabetical order. And once you finish your ten-minute presentation, and we're going to be pretty strict about the ten minutes, we're going to set aside five minutes for City Council to ask questions of that commission. And I'm going to be really strict with my colleagues about the five minutes that we get. If there are things that we do not get to during that course of the Q and A, we will come back after every board has had an opportunity to present so that we can do follow-up. That achieves two things. One, it means that those on the Airport Commission have to stick around till the very end to make sure that we don't have any further follow-up questions. But it also means that we have an opportunity to give every commission an opportunity to make their presentation, and we don't get bogged down on Q and A with one commission early on while everybody else sits and waits. So again, ten minutes to do your presentation, an initial five-minute Q and A, then we'll move on to the next commission in alphabetical order. When we're finished with every commission, we'll open it up again to City Council for questions and for comments that any of us might have. And with that, I'm going to let the City Clerk take and call each board and commission up, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Afthab Dada of the Airport Commission.
Please. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Afthab Dada, Chairman of the Airport Commission, I believe it's the largest commission of all the other commissions that we have, and the reason being that we represent all the cities in the Coachella Valley, including the Riverside County. Having been in the desert for over three decades, this is so refreshing that finally our this City Council decided to hold this meeting and recognize all the volunteers that are some of us are so passionate about what we do and think about our commission only to give the greatest time so we have a better city and a better commission. Having said that, several months ago, our commission had a session where we were given an opportunity to come up with the top two priorities from each commission, for each commissioner, I'm sorry. And the Airport Commission narrowed it down to, and we had a half a dozen of the highest priorities. Number one being that knowing that our airport is called the Palm Springs International Airport, and also knowing that we don't have any international flights, nor any customs, nor immigration. So that was our number one choice. And Kevin or the others, if I say anything incorrect, correct me. So definitely we would like to see down the road, we take that step, understanding that in order to get immigration and customs, it takes a lot of federal as well as state approvals. But we need to sometimes, somewhere have to make a start. Our number two priority was, and especially the last or the first quarter of this year, we had some very difficult time with the parking. And knowing that our traffic for 2022 jumped up so significantly that there were times that we had no parking available. So that's another opportunity. And I believe the third one was the relocation of the rent-a-car facilities. Because I know it, the traffic of our airport will continue to grow, and hoping that someday we can build our international facility that will even grow further. So having and planning a multi-story building to accommodate and house that and have a ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year plan for the foreseeable future of our airport. I believe that's I have, and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Afthab, thank you. Please stay. Are there any questions from Council? I have one. Afthab, could you talk about what you see as some of the first steps to bringing customs and immigration service to the Palm Springs International Airport?
Well, I would like to really lean on to the professionals, knowing that I know the hotel business quite well, and I could answer some questions. But we have an Airport Director, plus we have our City Manager and the staff, and we could start some legwork and at least take some of the baby steps. And I have a strong feeling that might take maybe three, four, five years, we will have to build a structure, both to house the customs as well as the immigration, and hoping that we can get it done.
Thank you. Harry, do you want to add anything at this point?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity. For international service, really, the genesis of that is going to be a master planning project for the airport so that we can understand what traffic we're receiving, understand what our limitations, what our capabilities are. And then from there, we can build a program around international service. We've already been in discussions with Customs and Border Protection about what that looks like, what the facility's needs are. We just need to undergo that planning process to ensure it happens.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe we may have missed the Administrative Appeals Board.
Madam Mayor, we do not have a presentation from the Administrative Appeals Board.
Okay, thank you.
We do have Stephen Moses in the room. It looks like he is approaching the podium, if that's okay with you.
Excuse me. I'm the only one of that board that's here tonight. And good evening, first of all. And we had no prepared presentation. That was correct. There's one thing I'd like to throw at the City Council. The primary discussions we have on that board relate to violations of the Short Term Rental Act. And many of us, or most of us, remember the tumult and argumenting, arguing that went on that led to that act. And it's a very strict and very severe act. We tend to believe now that if we had a little more leeway to make decisions, to split the baby, do the fine and not the barring of the lifetime bar of renting, or vice versa, that the city may be better served. And so we would ask the City Council, consider modifying and slightly weakening that law.
Are there any questions for Stephen? Stephen, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Tom Jakeway from the Architectural Review Committee.
Good evening. I'm Tom Jakeway from Architectural Review. And I want to say that our committee is pretty unique in that every single person on the committee is a design professional. So we are really tasked with approaching our review of projects in a very professional sort of way. And I have to say, our committee works together like a Swiss clock. Everybody gets along with each other. And I think we have really, really improved a number of projects that have come before us. With our accomplishments, I would say the biggest thing is that this year, we transitioned from being called the Architectural Advisory Committee to becoming the Architectural Review Committee. And the difference is, when we were the advisory committee, we got the submittals first, and we would look at a design, and then pass it along to Planning Commission, and then they would review it, and they would send it back to us again. Well, Council directed that we try to short-term make some of this submittal process easier and a little more simple. So talking with Director Fag and some of the other members, we realized that it made more sense if the plans came to us second. Because when we were the first one to review it, we're only looking at the architecture and the materials and the colors and the signage. But we could see sometimes glaring things that we knew the Planning Commission wasn't going to approve: density, setbacks, zoning. And we felt frustrated that we were reviewing things that we knew weren't going to pass. So now they go to Planning Commission first, and they get that review of their entitlements. Planning Commission will sometimes give us little suggestions: look at this, tell us what you think about are the headlights hidden properly at a drive-through restaurant things. So our process has really become much more efficient. In addition, a new staff position was created within the Planning Department. And that person's sole job, or not sole job, but the primary job is to work with developers as they first approach the city with a project, and let them know what the city expects design-wise, let them know what the city expects in a presentation that they bring to us. Where in the past, we would get things that came to us that were so out in left field, it was just kind of a waste of time to review them. Where now, all of that has really been simplified with this pre-check or pre-review that a staff member can do. And I think the developers really appreciate it because it saves them both time and money that they know when they finally come to us, it's something that's going to be appropriate. And then moving ahead, we had a discussion at our last meeting. We had a project that came in that had a parklets that had been approved for their outdoor dining and outdoor dining itself in the parking lot. And during the initial part of COVID, the rules were just so suspended. Everybody wanted to support these restaurants and let them get outdoor dining going. Well, now I think we really need direction from Council as to, does the city have a plan for outdoor restaurants? Taking them off of the sidewalks, or taking them out of the parking lanes at least. How much leeway are we going to give restaurants to expand into their existing parking? And how much design review should we give outdoor dining, especially when it comes to lighting, music, things that can affect their neighbors? Is it appropriate that they eat up ten of their parking spaces and don't replace them? But they're doubling the seating capacity of the restaurant by being able to do that? So it's a fine line of wanting to support our businesses, but also support the design quality that we have always had. In the past, indoor or outdoor dining always was part of the initial submittal because there wasn't that parklet break that showed up. So any direction that we can get on the city's support of outdoor dining is appreciated. And another thing is code enforcement issues. It's very frustrating because we might work on reviewing a sign project where we're literally debating, should the letters on the sign be eight inches tall or ten inches tall? And we'll finally come up with a compromise and a solution. And six months later, we'll see that plastered across the entire front of the building is a window sign. The Regal Theater is a great example. It looks like a billboard. We would never approve that. Code enforcement should be able to approach these businesses and say, this is what's been approved. If you want to put that up, you have to submit it, and let's go through the process. Same thing happens with landscaping and a lot of these larger projects. If you go out to Home Depot, every parking, every landscaping bay is empty. The trees are dead. There's no maintenance. Nothing's been replaced. We when we review a project, we have such a strict review for shade from trees in the parking lot, types of trees, combinations of plants. And then again, after we expend all that time to review those sorts of things, it just seems to be forgotten. So hopefully that can be something that we can somehow find a mechanism to follow up on over time. Other than that, I think our committee is working like a Swiss clock. Like I said, I think we're excited to be working with the city, and thank you for letting us do what we do.
Tom, thank you. Any questions for Tom? Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Huff, Historic Site Preservation Board.
So good evening, Honorable Mayor Middleton, City Council Members and Staff, and our distinguished guests and volunteers. So I prepared a little PowerPoint for you this evening. So I will move as quickly as I can, staying on time here. So the Historic Site Preservation Board prides itself in helping to strengthen the city's reputation as a real, authentic, genuinely interesting, lively, and especially unique sense of place. That's the key driver in what has increased our visibility worldwide and as a destination for cultural tourism. So let's look at our boards' four primary purposes. We process historic site designation applications for recommendation to City Council. I want to report that the recent change that the Council passed in 2020 has had some good results. By establishing four classes of historic sites and creating a mechanism for review of buildings coming through the building permit process, has, as I understand it, has been a success. I understand that it's allowed the staff to quickly review projects for any historic preservation concerns and working together, and in many cases, has actually improved projects by making the owners aware of the significant aspects of their buildings. Second responsibility, once the sites are historically designated, our board reviews proposed changes to designated properties. And our third responsibility is to educate the community on what historic preservation is and why it's important. And I'll show you some examples a little later on. And then fourth area is to review major changes to Class III sites and full demolitions of Class IV sites. Our board is aware of the need to process these requests quickly so property owners can get on with their projects. And so we try very hard to do this part of our job quickly and efficiently, but also very thoughtfully. So the following slides are a quick review of recent Class I and Class II sites recommended. And we thank the City Council for granting historic designation status. So I'm going to show you real quickly some pretty pictures of our wonderful properties. Here's the 1968 Arthur Elrod Residence, designed by architect John Lotner. The Sutter Residence, built in 1960, Class II, designated by East Stewart, designed by East Stewart Williams. We have the House of Tomorrow, designed by architect William Kreisel for developer Robert Alexander in 1960. The Goldberg Residence, designed by architect William Cody in 1962. And here's architect Donald Wexler's own home for his family, designed in 1955. The Crockett Residence, built in 1951 by architectural designer Herbert Burns. Recently, the owner found the original paint color. So although this house is white in this photo, it was returned to the original color. And then we have the Class I Spanish Revival House, built in 1930 for industrialist Henry Pearson. And by the way, he was the one that was responsible for digging the well for which Deep Well is known. And he lived there, but it was too far out of town. So he decided he needed to come closer to town. With this house. So next are six houses in Araby Cove, given Class I designation. This is a rare house, built of handmade, sun-dried adobe bricks with a red tile roof, built in 1925, '26. It's one of a handful of preserved Palm Springs homes built of adobe. And then there's the Gianani Rock House that was built in 1925 for Bank of America banker. And there's even a built-in safe down in almost And I, and there's even a built in safe down in almost the basement. So next is the, the Hopi Village. This is a group of four handmade stone houses built in the 1930s that have lots of stories connected with them, some myth, some truth. This is nicknamed the Hopi Village. And our hope for these fragile buildings is that the historic designation will give prestige and encourage the owners to increase their care as they are kind of falling apart. The last example I'm going to show you is the class two home designed by Prairie Style Architect William Gray Purcell in 1935. So as you can see through these diverse examples, it's clear that the board and the city council have worked together and expanded the preservation of architecture of Palm Springs beyond the mid-century modern lens. So we looked at desert designated properties. So what else do we do? We review owner initiated changes to historic properties. We study and refer to the guidelines of the Department of Interior Standards for the treatment of historic structures. And we review certificates of appropriateness for changes respecting the historic character is always key. So here's an example of a class one, a class one National Bank, now Bank of America from the 1950s. That's currently restoring the exterior colors and improving the landscape. Okay, demolition, consideration of demo requests are part of our responsibility, which we review very carefully and seriously. And here's an example of the former Arenas Lodge that did not meet the findings. So what is our board's future vision? It is reflected in our work plan that we develop each year. So, so each year our board identifies several historic sites to study. And we've listed a few here, the Talkwoods Golf Course Clubhouse, Riverside County Courthouse across from City Hall. We have a number of others that we're thinking about. And we also are working on applications from the public that include several family homes. And of course, community outreach and education are also very important of our work plan. Our wonderful city website has a wealth of information for the public. And it, and it has all kinds of valuable information, including the citywide historic content statement. And through assistance of our staff liaison, Ken Lyon, presentations to the Realtors Board has also informed Realtors and buyers about potentially historic properties and how to market such unique properties. So our annual symposium recently held on April 23rd and 24th at the convention center hosted about 500 attendees in this very same room over two days, bringing people and students together. We've just recently appointed a new subcommittee to organize this 2023 symposium and the associated activities. And so while the symposium teaches us about preservation, researching, writing, saving and maintaining, it's also about celebrating the people and recognizing them. This year, three awards were given and presented to Dick Perquette, Stephen Kilon and Ken Lyon. So my wrap up comments quickly. So, so we greatly appreciate and value city council support with budget and staff resources, enabling us to do our work. We appreciate the council's establishment of a historic preservation offer officer. Ken Lyon has been wonderful in, in helping and working and communicating with us. And then we thank the, the council for reviewing those meal acts, contracts, which are very important and are kind of an incentive for tax breaks. And now cultural tourism. It's our full blown economic engine and the work of our board and the council's awareness of the importance of preservation to the economic vitality of our city is something greatly admired by other cities. So we are so proud to preserve what our city is unique in every aspect. And in closing, there's that wonderful saying, you know, that we're, Palm, Palm Springs is like no place else. So I thank the many individuals and our leaders for making Palm Springs like no place else. Thank you.
Catherine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from council for Catherine? Thank you.
Ron DeHart, Human Rights Commission.
I need support. So the newest chair of the Human Rights Commission, Hugo Loyola, will close up our comments for today's presentation. I'm Ron DeHart with the Human Rights Commission. Don't confuse us with the Human Rights Campaign. Our mission is the, with the Human Rights Commission. We're here to promote improved relations, civic peace, the full acceptance, respect and participation of all persons in all aspects of community life so that we will be equal in the eyes of each other. Before we move on, I would like to honor the memory of two commissioners who passed this year. Nicky Randolph and Jim Gross, both whose commission and community service made a difference for the city of Palm Springs. And as we move on, I'd like to acknowledge our staff liaison, Jay Verada, who's in the, oh, over here now. Very good, Jay. Thank you. Jay's the glue that keeps us together and we appreciate all the work that he does. So our accomplishments for the Human Rights Commission this last year. I think the greatest, oh, see, I told you I needed assistance. The contributions, the greatest contributions that we feel we made for the city is that the city's general plan now includes an emphasis on diversity, safer neighborhoods and diverse commercial arts, entertainment and cultural operations. It now includes cultural diversity and identity as elements that make Palm Springs one of a kind resort destination. Inclusive, safe, open space is also featured as we aspire to have a sustainable, livable, resilient economy and workforce. There's now a focus to have accessible infrastructure for all, regardless of socioeconomic position. Second key success story for us is we elevated the voice of survivors of section 14 and their families. We encouraged the integration of human rights principles of dignity and equality into local policy. And we provided support to council's action in January to not fund an entity that profits from a country condemned for human rights abuses and violations of international human law. Another point was raising awareness for Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and denouncing the alarming increase of microaggressions and racial profiling. We believe as a commission that our actions are to be guided by and in support of the Palm Springs City Council. Other accomplishments that you can see on the screen and see, I'm not doing my, advancing the slides properly. Thank you Hugo. Women's rights, we had a Hispanic Heritage Month session on Zoom. We focused on World's Day Against Trafficking in Persons, World Refugee Day, United Nations Public Service Day. And the Human Rights Commission authored a June Pride Month proclamation as well as Black History Month, International Migrant State Proclamation and an International Day of Education. And now Hugo will tell us about our next steps.
Thank you very much. So my name is Hugo Loyola and I'm just so happy to be stepping into the chair position for this commission. And I'd like to share what is next for us in the coming year. Our strategic focus will be to continue to work with our city manager. We will continue to integrate and establish as needed diversity, equity and accessibility guidelines in operations and in policy. And our second focus would be on living wages, quality, affordable housing, homelessness, individual and workforce employability, and how this impacts the working class in our community. We must protect and safeguard the right and the opportunities of all persons to be free from all forms of discrimination, including sources of income and housing policies that exclude individuals. This work will help provide our city council the analysis of how these topics impact the quality of life of our diverse community and the state of human relations in our city and recommendations to provide a framework for policy. I want to take a moment to thank you, Ron, for your hard work and dedication to the Human Rights Commission and beyond. I want to thank you also for your leadership and your vision. You have inspired us all, former and present fellow commissioners, to do our best work in support of the mandate of this commission of ours. And you have inspired me to raise my hand and step forward to chair this commission. We all thank you. And we still have four minutes.
Are there any questions for Ron or Hugo?
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Ed McBride, Library Board of Trustees.
Your honors, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and speak to you on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees. The librarian in me has to make a footnote to my presentation that the Library Board of Trustees was founded in 1938. And it was a group of citizens that were dedicated to library services to the village, our history note says. And they also noted that they had a fundraiser where everyone provided some sort of donation. The note also says it was depression era, so a dollar to $5 was a lot of money back then. So that puts that into perspective whenever we're before you asking for money, I hope so going forward. What have we done? Well, this is a partnership that includes all of you as well, because some of these projects have been on our list for a long time. First of all, the Wellwood Patio renovation. I'm so happy that I am here today to say it is completed. I hope you've been there. It is a beautiful space that respects that building and our history. We've also been working to just do housekeeping for the Board of Trustees. So we've updated our bylaws to reflect some changes that we are in managing the Library Board of Trustees. We also decided to give some money to fund a campaign that brought awareness to the library. We have so many people who love the library, but we have people we still need to reach. So those were things that we put out there in every possible way. Our staff worked really hard to bring more people to the library and it was very successful. We receive a lot of donations. Citizens are loving to come by and drop a book off or give us some donations to help us with our book sales and raise money. So it really is an effort for the entire citizens of Palm Springs to make sure we have a successful library program. We're very blessed, I won't say that too loud, but you guys know, that we have three very important support groups. And these are our groups of citizens who dedicate their time and they help us raise money to support the program. The trustees, which I represent, the friends of the library, what could we do without them? They've just been amazing partners and a real blessing to the community. And there's a lot of them out there. You all know that, I'm sure you hear from them. And our recent creation, the Board of Trustees formed the Library Foundation. And that, that was built or designed to help us with capital campaigns, which we've been talking about recently, to help us in the future for any kind of programs where we can raise money. And that is a citizen group as well that is very impressive and already busy. What were we doing during COVID? Well, we all know that it was a challenge to our community, but the library staff came together and tried to find ways that we could still keep services flowing, even with the shuttered building. How did we do that? You might not know this, but we actually had citizens pulling into the parking lot, trying to access the wifi in the library because they were so used to going to the, to the library for internet access. None of us are blessed to be able to go home and get on the internet. So what did we do? We, the library trustees and the foundation funded hotspots that we checked out. So people could actually have access to the internet at home, which was a great program and really won a lot of favor from the community. We also had Chromebooks. People don't have access to computers, so our program extended that as well, which we're very proud of. Library Board Trustees gave $40,000 of trust fund money, as you can see, and it was spent for materials. And what we're seeing, I'm, I've been a librarian for 40 years. And so I remember the days where we used to have phonodisc. How many of us know what a phonodisc is? And then it faded out to CDs. Well, now CDs, nobody wants CDs. So what do you want? You want ebooks. Everybody wants to download an ebook. So we're spending more money in technology and moving us forward that way as well. So again, technology dictates what we do. What do we want to do next? Well, I think this is a topic that you guys have been talking about a lot recently. And it's time. Our, our building, it's, it's tired. It needs, it needs some renovation. It needs some help. And we've been on that for quite some time. So we're very much focused on raising awareness, getting all of our support groups and as well as you all to help us with the main library renovation, whatever that might be, whatever it might look like. It's time. And I think we all agree to that. Thank goodness, finally. And finally, the J.C. Frye Building, I kind of call this as a building that sits on our campus that people ride by every day and really don't pay much attention to. And if you haven't been in that building, I think that when we get through with that, it's going to be a remarkable facility for the community. Our vision is to create meeting space, have a bookstore there for the friends and to also provide a temporary location when we have to shut the main library down potentially for renovation. So it's, it's on the library campus and I think it's going to be one of those things we'll all be very proud of someday. And that, I thank you for your time again and any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ed? Yes.
Counsel, Mayor Pro Tem.
I can't help myself. I want to talk about the library all the time.
Wonderful. We love that.
What do you think about the possibility of having branch libraries, especially once renovations do start on the library? Providing a couple or maybe three even locations at different parts of the city?
Our history, at one time, we did have branch libraries in the city, right? And for whatever reasons, those went away, as many things do. I come from working in public libraries with lots of branches. And in particular, I, I spent so many years at San Francisco Public where those branches become a part of the community they serve, especially in the different pockets of the community. I think that it's certainly something, once we get the main library renovation underway, that we should examine as a way to extend services. And there are lots of ways to do that now. And it's not sometimes even a traditional brick and mortar. It can be other ways of having, you know, virtual library branches and other types of services. So I, I think it definitely is something that is worth looking at. And I, I think that it would be one more way, since our city is growing and there's more population to, to get service out there. Did I answer your question?
Yes, it's, it's something I'm interested in, just wanted to know if you had thoughts. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that is something that, you may recall, Mayor Middleton formed a, charged a committee some, a few years ago now. It feels like it was just yesterday, where we had a, a, a member, a community member based group that looked at where the library should be located. And during that exploration, we actually dusted off the, the branch library system that existed and talked about that. So that committee was well aware that there was branches at one time and how they served the community. And where are they now? So, yeah.
Ed, I think that's a very pregnant question as to whether or not we should. And on behalf of my opinion, and I think many on council, having the trustees explore the issue as to what should we do and how should we approach it, particularly timing in terms of should discussions around a branch system precede renovation of the main library, or should it be something that's subsequent?
It certainly could be included in the planning process for the main library, certainly, when we start that process. I think that would be a very smart thing to do.
I think it would be very appropriate for the trustees to take on that research and recommendation.
I will certainly take that back. Thank you again.
Jeffrey Bernstein, Measure J Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, City Council. I'm Jeffrey Bernstein, the Chair of the Measure J Commission. So the Measure J was a tax that was voted on by the citizens in 2011, and, oops, that's very small, and took effect in 2012. It's a 1% sales tax, which means that it's primarily, it's not just funded by residents, but it's also by visitors as well, but all the money stays within Palm Springs. It was set up as a 25-year tax, so it will sunset. We're now 10 years into it. So one of the things we want to do is help provide some background of all the things that Measure J has accomplished, and in the hopes that when it does come up for vote again, the citizens will see what's been done. The commission is an oversight commission governed by an ordinance, and we oversee and monitor all the expenditures and audits of the Measure J funds. And additionally, the commission makes recommendations to the city council for use of the funds as part of the annual budget cycle. Oops, that's tiny. Okay, sorry. So some of the projects that have been funded in part or whole by Measure J include renovation of the Wellwood Library, over 140 miles of street paving, the renovation of Fire Station Number Four, the police station remodel, new bike paths and bike lanes, sidewalk repairs, funding for the high school auditorium, the Architecture and Design Museum, the Mizell Senior Center, the animal shelter, the visitor center, the swim center and pavilion, and there's been extensive park upgrades, most notably is our new downtown park, but also in our community parks. We've seen shade structures, the new gym floor at James O'Jesse, an ADA accessible playground, other playground upgrades, restroom upgrades, and more. So today, through the 2223 fiscal year, Measure J will have raised about $150 million. Our current annual revenue is approximately $20 million a year. So the process of the city projects that qualify, there's potentially hundreds of projects that come eligible for Measure J. These are all vetted by the city's engineering department with the help of other departments. And the city's always looking for outside funding, such as grants and other tax budgets, but the projects that need Measure J funding are presented to the commission for review and prioritizing prior to go into city council. Each year, there are two types of projects that are presented to Measure J Commission. The first are the projects initiated through various city departments, and these are generally larger-scale projects. And over the course of the fiscal year, the Measure J Commission will review the projects and make recommendations to city council as part of the annual budget cycle. And there's also an annual set aside for community-initiated projects. Currently, the set aside is $1 million a year, and these are generally smaller in scope. And these projects are initiated by other city commissions, nonprofits, OnePS, and directly from the citizens. Often, the Measure J Commission in the past has created themes, given that it's a small amount of money, so they'll focus on sidewalks or other hotspots or other issues. With all of these funds requests, city council makes the final decision on all use of Measure J funds. These are some of the things that we have recommended for the 2223 fiscal year, which is, again, the revenue is approximately $20 million, but there's about $10 million in carryover from previous years. So the projects that we've put forward for the 2223 fiscal year include $6 million in street paving, which is an increase from the previous $3 million a year, $4 million to redo the recreational field lighting, $4 million set aside for the main library renovation, $2.5 million in city facility improvements, $2 million in various parks projects, $1.6 million set aside for the relocation of Fire Station One, and numerous other recommendations include convention center improvements, funding for the Plaza Theater renovation, restroom renovations in community parks, improved park ADA access, funding for the Mizell Senior Center, kitchen wellness centers and gardens at our public schools, and also the commission has recommended funding for various projects at the animal shelter, the Boys and Girls Club, the Palm Canyon Theater, and the Palm Springs Cultural Center. As the $1 million in community-initiated projects was not used during the two years of the pandemic, there's now potentially $3 million to be allocated. To date, Measure J has only allocated 1.6 million of this $3 million. In the year ahead, Measure J will start on planning for the 2324 fiscal year. We'll start reviewing the projects in September with an ultimate presentation to city council in May of '23. Additionally, staff has been working on a five-year capital improvement plan, and this is an important tool for Measure J that will help us determine funds which may need to be set aside for longer-term projects. So some of the main goals of Measure J going forward are to increase community awareness of Measure J projects so our citizens know where their tax dollars are spent. And at some point, the tax will sunset, and voters may be asked to decide whether to renew. The commission is also working to increase funding for the community projects. The $1 million set aside was established when Measure J revenue was about half what it is today. We want more community input, and what we hope to achieve are set annual amounts to be devoted to particular areas of the city. These are more projects than funds, so the goal will be to ensure that specific areas are addressed each year, including parks, police and fire, libraries, community and cultural centers, streets and sidewalks. Thank you.
Jeffrey, thank you. Are there any questions for Jeffrey? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Elcorn, Parks and Recreation Commission.
Hello, City Council, Madam Mayor, and all the rest of the council, thank you. My name's Jerry Elcorn, Parks and Rec Commission Chairman. I was born and raised here in the city of Palm Springs, been here since 1980. You know, I love what we're doing with the city right now, and we're hoping to progress this forward since we've started. We have our summer camp and some of the recreation accomplishments that we've done so far. We're ongoing programs that are running daily. Right now is our summer camp with over 150 to 165 kids per day in our camp. We've met with the pickleball community, going over with them and hearing their needs, their concerns. We've addressed it to you guys, and we're moving forward with that project. Dog park survey, our dog parks are overutilized. We need new dog parks, more better facilities. From there, you look at our current accomplishments. We've created a new archery program that's filled. Every time we run the program, it's completely filled. We're actually looking to double up next season. I came in, I'm a Level III archery instructor, and it's good to see a new program for the kids. Our city needs it. We worked with facilities to plant over 88 new trees in three of our different parks. Thank you, City Council. Is that what there were some of you guys planting those trees, trying to really make a difference for our community? Playground resurfacing, we put all new surfaces in our playground, and it was smart the way it was thought out. We did it with tile system this time instead of just a solid unit. So now when a park gets worn out, we can just replace that single part. That's just good thinking in the future. You know, new restrooms are going in. We got new restrooms at Sunrise Park. We got new restrooms going in at Demuth, at James O'Jesse we're still waiting for, and a couple of the other parks. But it's good to see the new facilities coming in. It's really a great improvement for our city. We have our different programs that are going on. We got the pavilion upgrades, the new sound system, we're waiting on this, some of the technology to come in and become available to upgrade the sound system at the pavilion. New Parks and Rec Director, thank you, Jesus, is finally starting in a couple days. It's been a little bit. I'm looking forward to that. New Parks and Rec Director, we want to give her some time to understand our community, which we really do, want her to understand our community, what it's all about, the diversity. You know, we have a really eclectic, you know, unique community here. Want her to know so we can start moving forward with a new master plan to see where our city's going. We're not the same city we were 10 years ago. We're not going to be the same city we are 10 years from now, and I want to see it grow in a productive way. Looking forward to working with Measure J. Thank you. Measure J's been great, a major help, making great strides to help improve our city for the people that are year-round and all the residents that are here generally. So we rise up for Parks and Recreation. So that's supposed to be the end of my presentation, but really, you know, we're here trying to make it better for our city. We're working diligently. You know, we have a lot of different stuff. We just had Juneteenth just passed, very successful, good presentation. I'd like to help, you know, foster everything and grow it to make it a better, all-inclusive community. As you guys see, I'm swaying here. I'm a walking paraplegic, so I'm very, I'm very about the adaptive and the ADA accessibility, trying to make better inclusion for our whole parks, because parks make fun life, you know, make life fun. It really does. We all work hard, let's recreate too. So with that being said, I'm going to be a short, sweet presentation. I'm usually the guy in the background. I'm all about the business and not really the business-talking aspect, so with that, council, please, any questions?
Are there any questions for Jerry?
Jerry, I have one. We've talked a lot about two different master plans. One, a master plan to reimagine and revision Sunrise Park, and then a much larger initiative to do a new master plan for all of the parks that we have and should have within the city. What kind of advice and direction from city council would help you and the new Parks Director to get started on those kinds of initiatives?
Thank you for the question. You know, for me, really, I'd like to have a lot of community meetings to reach out to our community. You look at the, like, right now, you look at our working class, you know? They play soccer every weekend. There's no soccer park we have dedicated for them. We're getting ready to build a pickleball court, which I love, greatest upcoming, you know, sport. Let's include everybody what's going on here. So let's really be inclusive and listen to what we need, you know? We have great facilities. We have new lighting coming in. Our ball fields are doing great. Our swim facility, we just had the first LGBT swim meet at Palm Springs, where it should be, you know? We have these great things that are coming in. Let's just foster it and help grow it. That's really what I want to see happen, and listen to what the community needs. And I just appreciate what you guys are doing. It really is, you guys get hit from every side, and I just thank you for what we, for what you guys do, really.
Thank you, and I know this will be a conversation that will continue. Community imports absolutely vital to getting it right, but we do need a master plan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kathy Wormick, Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council friends, I'm here tonight to talk about the Planning Commission. We're a working commission. We hold meetings twice a month. We had 20 of them last year. We, it was a light year for us. We only approved 40 new projects in the city. We had about four denials, which I'm sure the council knows all about, because anytime we deny a project with great consideration, and it's difficult for us to do that, you always hear about it, and it is always an appeal. We have done some wonderful things last year. We got to approve two new affordable housing projects, Vista Sunrise Two, which has 61 affordable housing units, and also looked at the DAP, the new DAP campus, and a final approval for ALO Project, which was 71 units of affordable housing. And in those projects, we mainly helped trying to meet the applicant's interests without creating denials or difficulties that would cost them more money. We are also working, and it's partially why it's a lighter year for us, with a new architectural review process. Last year, we gave away several of the kinds of projects we previously approved. We no longer look at hillside homes. We no longer look at sign ordinances. And previously, we gave back or gave to the Architectural Review Committee landscape projects. We need to review that this year. It's worked to the extent that it's made it simpler for our applicants, but some staffing glitches, which were pretty major, didn't make it as seamless for the Planning Commission. We were supposed to have a senior planner who was an architect reviewing projects that came to us for site plan, design, and consistency issues. And that really got held up in that that person who was appointed was also working another full-time job and wasn't available to play the key role in this transition process that Planning Commission needed. But I think the process, and I've worked with that change process and was a real advocate for it in Santa Monica, it works well to have the designers have the final say on design and planning have the final say on setbacks, zoning, and other more planning-related issues. We worked on some things that were difficult in COVID. We did the housing, the draft housing plan approval, which is still held up by HCD. It's approved by us but not finished by the state. We did the land use plan and build out, and we did the vision and priorities. And that was especially hard, doing that in a COVID environment where we couldn't take it out, to take those issues out to the community for full discussion. And we've, we did a few other things, the zoning code update. We did, we worked on the ordinance, the SB 9, which allows, it's a state ordinance that allows for lot splits to allow up to four units on a previous, on a unit, a lot that had been designated for one unit, worked with the city council and staff, and we're still working on that to bring back to you a revised ordinance. And we worked on service station standards. The other thing we worked on was two nightclubs, one of which we approved and one of which we denied, and brought to the city council a serious concern about crime in the downtown district and the need for better policing, more policing downtown, especially in the late hours of the night, because the testimony that came to us on both of those nightclubs referred to shootings, fistfights, and other incidents very late at night. Next year, we're going to be busy, I hope. We've got the general plan limited update, which we'll work on and also get to city council. We've got a zoning code update. This is important because we haven't updated our zoning code in 40 years, and this is, it's really major. I think it's in your budget approvals this year, and it's really important that we get that done. And we're working on new design standards with the Architectural Review Commission. And then we've got some zone text amendments on carbon-free renewable energy and cannabis facilities, an issue that we also brought to the city council last year and will be coming back to us. And last year, when we were choosing our priorities, other than the zoning update and the general plan update, our third was shade in the form of protection of our existing trees and tree planting requirements. It's something that the commission cares a great deal about in shade structures and appropriate shading, and we want to work on a draft ordinance with the Sustainability Commission. It was something we wanted to do last year, and we hope that we'll be able to do this year. And as always, I think our commission, because And as always, I think, uh, our commission, because we're working, because the things we deal with are also things that will go to City Council if the applicant disagrees with the decisions we make, we need some access to console, it had worked fairly well for us when we had a city consular who was appointed to the Planning Commission and came, and not to all the meetings, but came and sat and talked with us occasionally, we've been missing that president's presence, actually the presence of, um, Mayor Middleton, who did such a good job as our liaison, but it's something I think we would really benefit from, uh, to have more interaction or more discussion, uh, with console on issues, um, prior, possibly sometimes prior to decision. Thank you.
Are there questions? Kathy, thank you. Are there questions, uh, for Kathy?
Oh, and I just wanted to say, it's not a thankless job. It really isn't.
Well, it feels that way from time to time, I'm sure, but thank you. Kathy, you brought up the liaison, and thank you for the kind words, um, could you talk about what, uh, what helps and what does not help, uh, in terms of having, uh, that liaison relationship, uh, as it is something we've talked about, uh, at different times with many commissions?
Well, I, I think it, I, I think we've been in a position where on several issues that we felt strongly about, we ended up with console taking a different position, Tower Market being one example, the supermarket, um, there, uh, one of, one of the housing projects, and I, I think it just helps to have someone discuss issues with to find out if there is console policy, uh, if we're overstepping, uh, on, on a denial, um, where we think there isn't console policy, but console thinks there already is policy, I think those are the kinds of questions so that we fit better into what you're trying to do while we're doing our role as authentically as we can.
Thank you, that helps.
Thank you.
Tracy Marigan, Public Arts Commission.
Thank you, Mayor and Pro Tem and, uh, City Council members, we're really glad to have you, have us here tonight, so to give you some info on-
Tracy, a little closer to the mic, please.
Sorry, to give you, uh, some info on what we've been doing all year. Um, so our commission is, uh, we're short one commissioner at the moment, but, um, Gary Armstrong is here to help me tonight, uh, to give you, uh, an overview for next year, and I'm gonna tell you what we've been doing this past year. So, uh, last October, uh, we created our goals and priorities for you guys, so we came up with four of, four of our goals, uh, to update our public arts ordinance, which was, uh, created over 30 years ago, so when we did our 30th anniversary a couple of years ago, we really asked the public and asked, uh, you know, our commissioners on, on doing work within the commission, like how we could modernize, uh, the ordinance, which was created during a time of great recession here, uh, and modernize it to a time now of growth, right, and a lot more opportunities for public art, um, the, our community has changed so much over the past 30 years, so we really put a lot of time and effort, um, probably a year's worth of effort in talking about the ordinance, uh, among our original commission that went out last year, and then our new commissioners brought them into the conversation, so we, we updated that ordinance, uh, for you guys and have sent that to you for evaluation. The second, uh, priority was to continue to evaluate our public arts collection, um, with maintenance issues and to survey the collection, so one of the things that we've realized that the, um, public art collection had a lot of, um, deferred maintenance, uh, for many, many years, and it's in our ordinance as our responsibility, so we all felt very strongly that we should get that under, um, get that back on track and really, uh, create a maintenance program for the commission and the city, so we started that the previous year, and now we, um, worked on that, uh, this year, so we've created a new three-year program for you, um, which should be coming to you soon. Um, the other priority was relaunching our, uh, popular pre-COVID, uh, uh, public arts grant program for neighborhoods, so, uh, we just launched this program right two weeks before COVID happened, everybody, we had been pre-launching it and people were so excited about it, um, so COVID happened and we kind of transformed that program, uh, to work through COVID, but we really wanted to go back to the basics of it as a way of putting public art, uh, throughout the city, so neighborhood, inhabit neighborhood and community-directed, so neighborhoods would come to us with the idea, and we would work with them to, you know, uh, workshop the idea into a beautiful piece of public art for the community. Um, and then we wanted to create, um, a new piece of art, uh, that would promote social issues, uh, in the city and have it on, have it be on public property, so it would be, uh, much easier to take care of. So then the other thing that we did was we also, uh, committed to kind of changing the entire way our commission worked, so we reorganized ourselves to work with city staff and the, and the council on the direction that we wanted to go, so we have done that through the year, and then we've also increased our communication with other commissions, so the two commissions that we kind of have started talking with are, um, Parks and Recs, so they're not surprised at a public art piece that just happens and they know nothing about it, so to have people be on the front end of our projects, and we've been talking about that to the library about their, you know, their new, uh, renewal of the library and rebuilding of the library, and wanting to be on the front end of those conversations with public art, um, and with Sunrise Park, so we'd really like to be on the front end of all of those conversations to create a really great opportunity for public art in the city. So, um, so number one, we do, we updated our public ordinance in November, we created this, uh, maintenance three-year program, which is going to be about 30% of our budget for the next few years until we have completely caught up with every piece of art. Um, we've relaunched our artists here, we did that in February, um, and then we restarted our community outreach, because pre-COVID, we did have a tremendous amount of community outreach, um, and then that kind of all went online, so March was our first foray out into that at the PS1 picnic. Um, and then we have approved, uh, our social issue piece, so we'll see, uh, how that ends up, uh, working out with the council. So, that was in March. And then I, our additional accomplishments are, um, we've approved the AIDS Memorial and just approved their installation, um, request, we, um, commissioned the TOT, uh, TOT, pub, piece of public art in, last July and installed it in December, um, and we approved the purchase of another piece of art, Fossils of the Future, which was a temporary piece of art, so we approved that in May, and then for temporary art in the city to keep things moving and keep things fresh, we, uh, approved the loan of, uh, The Art of Taming Horses, which is on the Takwitz median, uh, last June, and Wishing Well, which is at JOJ last June, and then in November, we extended the loan of Popsicles, and, um, we extended the loan of Suspended in Time by Gonzalo La Brea right in front of the, uh, museum. So here are a few of the pieces, our TOT, which was one of our artists from our 30x30 public art show that we held at the museum, uh, Fossils of the Future, the Pic, PS1 picnic, and that's, uh, going to be the AIDS Memorial, and then here are temporary art pieces. Um, and then in June, we started the Stop in the Name of Love project, so we've continued our maintenance programs with the benches, um, and then we did the first Juneteenth celebration, we also submitted, uh, a restoration program to Measure J for Rainmaker, um, and we've re, um, re-approved the loans with the Palm Springs Art Museum that hadn't been looked at for a number of years. So we have ongoing, uh, conversations about relocating the three John Clement sculptures together, that's how they should be viewed, uh, and then be able to restore them at the same time, um, renewal of the Richard Wyatt mural, um, the Filipino-American mural project, and new ideas for an ECO art walk, asphalt art, and, uh, and talking about Lawrence Crosley. So I'm going to hand it over to, um, Gary, and Gary is also our liaison to Parks and Recs.
Michael, jump ahead?
Yes.
Oh, shit, can you go back? Okay, outlining our goals in five minutes is kind of unthinkable, and so rather than talking very, very quickly, I'm going to give a broad focus on three equities that we apply to all of the work we do, and hopefully it will help you understand how we work, because I think we're trying to do some really interesting things with this commission that apply not only to everybody in, up on stage, but also everybody in the room behind me. Um, and the three words I want you to remember with everything we do is community, modernity, and totality. So, community seems straightforward, Palm Springs is a artist's community, um, but the community means all of us in this room, and we represent every interest of Palm Springs, and the Arts Commission needs all of your help. So, we're the first ones to complain when people come to us with their priority for us, and we don't necessarily always like that, but at the same time, we want to be the first when you have something that you think you need our expertise for. So when Jerry was talking about redoing Sunrise Park, we have 12 pieces of public art in Palm, in Sunrise Park, not many people know we have that many, but we do, so when that is being reimagined and re-envisioned, we would like to be part of that conversation. Simultaneously, we're going to be engaging every other commission where appropriate. So, we have a project that I'm going to be talking about next that is, I've already had initial conversations with the Parks Department, and once we get through that, we're then going to engage sustainability wherever you are, and then ultimately, we're all going to go to Measure J, because you need money to pay for what you want to do. So that's about two things we want to consider. Um, the first big project we're very excited about is, uh, the one in front of you, it's called Asphalt Art. In April, Bloomberg Philanthropies released a major study about their asphalt art initiative, and what it does is it shows how public art improves street safety. The report compared crash rates and real-time behavior of pedestrians and motorists in art sites before and after the projects were installed. Over a two-year period, vehicle crashes involving pedestrians and cyclists fell by 50% on streets with artistic design features, and crashes decreased 17%. So, we will intend to be implementing some test sites with this program, with each community be handled very differently. Some areas may have a public space like that, some may want to crosswalk, an area like Desert Highland Estates may want the residents to participate in not only the design, but the actual execution and implementation, whereas an area like Deepwell may have a specific area they would think that there needs some attention to, and they just may want to approve the design and not let, you know, have, have city engineering do the implementation itself. That's where we need to work with the different communities, and we need each of you to represent your community and tell us what you think would work best for you there. The next one we're quite excited about is the, uh, Takwitz Creek Trail Master Plan. Now, um, this was something, was a master plan that was done in June of 2010, and in there, planners suggested that public art should be placed all along the trail of the Wash. Um, they suggested that art should represent the natural habitat and that should include seed, seeding and shade sculptures and structures, as well as markers indicating the various fauna and flora along the way as educational aspects for local students. Um, this was proposed prior to the completion of Cody Place and Alon, and prior to the Sunny Dunes retail revival as well, so there's 300 new homes in that area that could take advantage of this opportunity. Um, and that's also where CV Link will be, which we did not know, but we were quite excited when we were thinking about it. So our intent is to create an ECO art walk along the Wash there. ECO art uses recycled or natural materials while focusing messages on sustainability, conservation, and awareness of climate change. These will not be bright-colored pieces of art that will need to be repainted every year. ECO art embraces the idea that the art will be aged and enhanced by environment and the weather, and we kind of think a lot of the artwork throughout Palm Springs should be embracing that idea as well. An example of the ECO art is this piece here, um, that you can see inset, uh, which is by Desert AIDS Project, it's a wonderful piece, and it just blends into the environment, but it's really, really stunning in person. That approach not only, um, hang on, engages the community by going through parks and sustainability and Measure J and all these other areas that we think will be involved in this, um, we think it will be something that the citizens will love as well, so. Um, and the other idea is rather than just doing a bronze statue there or something that's, you know, big and bright and neon, that the eco-friendliness of this makes it very modern, so if we're doing this entirely new thing in Palm Springs, an art walk, the idea that it's embracing ecology and sustainability is a nice, fresh way of thinking, we think, okay? And, social voices, uh, my next one, sorry, okay, social voices, I think Tracy touched on this a little bit, but the Palm Springs spirit is defined by a range of ethnicities, gender identities, social orientations, religions, physical abilities, and economic backgrounds, and each of those have an individual creative style and an individual social challenge as well. Now, we want to create an area or multiple areas throughout the city with permanent art which promotes all social issues. We were thinking of Francis Stevens Park, maybe that could be something with, with social issues, because every rally we do starts in Francis Stevens Park, maybe we do something there, now, we don't know, this is just an idea, we want to engage with the Human Rights Commission and the Parks Commission to find a way to embrace this idea. We haven't done any more thinking than that, but this is a cert, where we're headed, we're trying to create an, an ideology that then embraces and welcomes the other commissions as well, okay? And the intent of this project is to make sure that every Palm Springs resident from diverse backgrounds feels welcome and inspired and defines Palm Springs as a diverse city, okay? Now, I've covered community, modernity, and totality, totality is we have 300 pieces of public art in Palm Springs, not many people know that. Whenever we do a press release, it's, this is a new piece of artwork, it doesn't talk about the collection. When we did the TOT piece, we put in there, this is the 12th piece of artwork in Sunrise Park, what that does is it not only elevates TOT, it also elevates Sunrise Park, it elevates all the other pieces in that area of, of the collection. So, we have some ideas on how we want to engage with that, we think we could do curated art walks, work with Chamber of Commerce and promote that, you know, during Pride Month, we could do a curated art walk of all these LGBTQ artists around the city, we could do one for Modernism Week for artwork in different generations, we just think the entire collection is being a little neglected and needs a little love from the entire city, okay? Lastly, one of the major strategies we want to focus on is citing the artwork that we have. We know we are in the Instagram generation, we know that every person takes a picture of it, so we're very conscious of how the placement of it is and how it looks, we want it to be reframed to highlight Palm Springs to look as best as it can, so, because every time, if we do our job correctly, every photograph from every visitor will make them an ambassador to the beauty of Palm Springs.
Thank you both, are there questions for, uh, Councilmember Woods?
Uh, thank you for all you do, it's really appreciated, I think it's one of the things that sets us apart from other cities, um, although there are several cities that, that really focus on art. The City Council funded money to do an inventory and an appraisal of that, and where is that, what status is that in of all of our art that we own?
The only appraisal that we've sent you this year, and I don't- The only appraisal that we've sent you this year, and I don't know, that was for three pieces of art, and I think it was included, they ended up including it in the RFP for the three-year maintenance contract, and that is coming, we, we approved that in January, and then we're supposed to hear back this week about it. So I don't know if that's, that's what you're talking about, but we never, we've never voted to appraise the entire collection. We voted to appraise the Bogart statue, and then we voted to appraise three other pieces.
So where are we at with, you know, I think that Gary had talked about, we have three hundred pieces of art, and we funded an inventory of all of that, and you know, kind of, you know, it seems like, where's that at?
We didn't fund an inventory for all of the art. What I did was I took what the city had had that was the latest reporting on the art was from two thousand and sixteen, and it was missing tons and tons of information, had a lot of incorrect information. So over the past few years, I've been updating it, and I turned it over to the city to do with as they wish in February. And then we, I also created an inventory of all of our temporary art. So three hundred pieces equals all of our permanent collection plus temporary art.
Yeah, I think it's important not only for the city, and for all the work that you do, but for our visitors, if we're going to do an art walk or something, to understand what that is and get our hands on it, and I think it's a little nebulous right now.
Yeah, there, I mean, just to let you know, there are lots of documents that are missing from the city, like there is not, there are not histories of things that were purchased. There are, they're not always contracts. So there, a lot of this historic information is, is just not available. So, we've, you know, asked for it for years now, since I've been on the commission, because it's very important to me to be able to have a collection that we know, you know, what it's made of, when it was purchased. You know, we have some of the basic information, but there isn't a history behind the collection. So, what I've done over the past couple of years is take it upon myself to add my historic knowledge of what we've done over the past five years, and then take that document and update it with, you know, noted, as those are art changes and changes that have happened since, you know, we started doing maintenance on, on projects, when we did maintenance. So there is now a whole, like, spreadsheet of as much information as available, because the other documents, unless you can find them, nobody can find them, so they just don't seem to exist for some reason. So we kind of started from scratch, and the, the idea behind creating this document was that every commission and city staff would be able to add to it, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to finish that. I, I looked at our city manager, I think we funded that as a council. I think it's very important to finish that and work with the Arts Commission on doing that, so that can be done. And just two other quick questions. Takwitz, you know, we spent a lot of money redoing the median on Takwitz, and we have pads specifically for art. Those pads currently have the horses that you talked about on it, but you know, when those horses go away, have you guys worked on a system to keep rotating either our current art to there, or a collection to there? I think, because it's the gateway to our city for a lot of travelers.
Yeah, I mean, we wanted to move the Clemens there, but they are too big. So one thing, I think when, not always, I don't know if the Arts Commission was involved with what the planning was with the median, but because of traffic, you can only have a certain size of piece of artwork there. So yes, we would love to have art there that changes every year, but ideally, I don't think it would be art collection, because you would have to do an RFP to have someone design something specifically that will work with safety. So, the thing with the flags on those horses, which I brought up in, in our meeting, you know, this is the desert, it's windy and really sunny, and they're going to deteriorate quickly, right? So we asked them to give us three replacement banners, you know, so they would last three years. So, when you think of art in a median, especially, it's very narrow, the pads go really wide out to the street, that we really should do an RFP request for people to create maybe art on a theme, right? Like every two years, we do a new RFP, and maybe we pick, you know, maybe it's all one artist, or maybe four artists, and we have whatever this theme is for, leave it up for two years, and then rotate it out. So maybe it's just on loan, like what we pay for the production of the piece and everything, but we don't own it, so we don't have to find another spot for it, then the artist comes and takes it. So that, yes, we would love to do that.
Great, and then I think the last thing, a lot of cities around the country during Pride Month, our pride is different, gay Pride Month, gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, Q, questioning all that. We, I haven't seen anything from the Arts Commission, like if you go to downtown Santa Monica, you know, over Third Street Promenade, they have a beautiful rainbow-colored kind of lights above, or you go to any city, they have something interesting, and we, I don't think have done anything like that, and I'm just curious why.
We did actually, we were working on a project with Pride last, in two thousand, what was the first year of COVID, two thousand and nineteen, twenty? But we weren't able to end up completing that project. So that, that was really an exciting thing, it was, because Pride ended up being not in person, so the project, we, we needed so many volunteers for the project that it wasn't, we weren't COVID available really to do it, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you to the entire commission.
Thank you.
Don Barrett, Sustainability Commission.
I was counting, and I didn't expect to be next. And I also was surprised that I'm the chair, and that was new, I'm not listed as a chair in the agenda. We had an election for chair in May, because our current chair and co-chair are both being termed out, so I'm, I'm a brand-new chair for the Sustainability Commission. I'm going to violate the order here a little bit also, because one of the things that has come out in this presentation is a reminder of how much we need to think beyond just our own commission. The examples from planning, the examples from arts, I know, having talked with Rex and Park and Rec, that there's a whole variety of ways that the agenda of sustainability can be shared with many other commissions, and, and that's been a helpful point in this meeting. Our agenda is really one of changing how energy and natural resources are used in the city. That's a big agenda, and we do that in a variety of ways. We have individual projects, or projects that are initiated by commissioners, and then we have a lot of, we have some things that come to us from the state, which create a lot of work, and we have a whole, and things coming from council. And all of those mean that we have, we have a lot of work to do to change behavior. So a lot of what the commissioners are doing is working with our very, 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 very limited staff on trying to come up, trying to implement programs to change behavior, and trying to bring the, the perspectives of other communities, of, of neighborhoods and other communities, and just other, I'm going to say academic, I don't really mean academic, but other types of perspectives to changing behaviors. What we have worked on in the past year is quite a few things. I thought we were going to have a list up there, but we don't, so I don't have to go over that. There are a number of very specific projects we've worked on in the past year, past year and a half, that I, I want to cite. One of them is that we've had a household battery recycling program that's been going on since two thousand and nineteen. We are very, very, very close to having recycled two tons of batteries, and when they're, when those include my hearing aid batteries, that's a lot of batteries. So, that's, we, we know that's a lot of work. We also have a sustainability scholarship that we have been doing for a good while. The scholarships are up to seven hundred and fifty dollars per business, and they help businesses adjust to the policies of sustainability. For example, everyone has heard about the banning of, of, of gas-powered leaf blowers. We help, we help businesses with the purchase of leaf blowers. We help them with, we help restaurants convert to reusable foodware and, and disposable ware, and we've also done some work, I don't have it on my list, with helping businesses install EV chargers for cars. Those are, those are very big actions. We've also presented a climate rec, climate, yep, a climate action roadmap to the City Council last October. The roadmap recommends, has recommended actions for reducing greenhouse gas emissions from transportation and from residential and commercial buildings. We've hired consultants to meet with food service vendors to facilitate implementation of the foodware ordinance. We've completed a final version of an amendment on the municipal code regarding tobacco and cannabis use in the city, that's in collaboration with the Human Rights Commission, and that will be ready to go to council very, very soon. And we concluded a turf removal and installation of a demonstration garden at the, at the airport. So those are some main projects. And also, right now, thanks to Commissioner Friedman, we're in the middle of working on two proposed energy use ordinances, even though this is, he's about ready to be termed out, that will be going to council to help with renewable energy, help with renewable energy, and with energy use in multifamily residences. So we're doing a lot, and we're doing it with what is soon going to be four commissioners. And, and that's, that's a drastic reduction, and we don't currently have a project director. So that's part of our goal for the next year, is a project director and more commissioners. Let's see. We're going to continue, of course, our process of working with staff and with Palm Springs Disposable and everyone else, with how do we get people to change behavior, in lots of different ways. We have a greenhouse gas analysis update that is in, that's coming up. We have a climate action plan that's coming up. We have more to water conservation issues, and like I said, the energy products. So there's, so there's a lot that we're doing, and we're doing it with a very short staff at this point. And as I said at the beginning, we're very, I'm very pleased to hear the amount of interest in sustainability issues from public arts and human rights and everyone else, that we can work together to help change the entire culture of, of environmental usage. So, that was probably too quick, but I'm a fast talker.
Are there any questions for Don? Don, thank you, and thank your commission for.
Daniel Ganella, Village Fest Board.
Good evening, City Council members and all of our fellow board members and commission members. First, I'd just like to take a moment to make everyone familiar with the names of the people that are on the Village Fest Committee. Myself, I'm the chair, Daniel Ganella. Celia Garten is the vice chair, Julie Montante, David Anderson, Greg Roberts, John Bolton, Christopher Ramirez, and our downtown merchants partner, Joy Meredith, is a non-voting member of the commission as well. Village Fest has been serving the community for thirty years, every Thursday, with the exception of Thanksgiving. The event was on hiatus, of course, during the COVID nineteen shutdown for sixteen months. We reopened in July of two thousand and twenty-one. Since vendors and downtown merchants were absent from the event for over a year, they all had to be re-juried, meaning reviewed and re-juried, so, and approved. We did spend a lot of time recruiting merchants and vendors back, assisting with applications, re-juring them, and in order to prepare for the July two thousand and twenty-one reopening. It was a very busy, quick process for us. Part of the original festival footprint could not be accessed at that time because of the restaurant parklets, and in addition to the fact that we just didn't have a full slate of vendors at that point, some of the vendors had gone off to do other things because of COVID, some of them closed down or moved, and we are in the process of now recruiting newer and more exciting vendors. And I am not even moving my slides, I'm sorry about that. Okay. So, while some of the parklets are still there, we are afforded a, an almost full footprint from the original footprint of Village Fest now. We are in the process of recruiting new vendors. We're trying to diversify the slate of our vendors, in addition to trying to recruit more of the downtown merchants as well. We are, have been trying to recruit diverse food offerings as well. There, there's been an outcry for that, honestly, across the community, and I think that that's getting a lot better. One example is, we have an Italian pizza vendor that's making fresh pizzas onsite with a wood burning oven at their booth. And we continue to endeavor to try to find more and more diverse vendors. While many of the local families and tourists do attend the festival, it's largely attended by visitors and by tourists at this point. We are looking to market better to our locals, as well as to a wider visitor base. We think that diversifying our offerings could help with that. A lot of people I talk to here in town that say, oh, you're on Village Fest, been there, done that, you know, I go once in a while if I have a visitor in town. But, we'd like to see it become more of a weekly thing even for the locals. A lot of young families come, you see a lot of children there, it's really great. In addition to recruiting new vendors, we are also working on restoring our programs and events. The first event that we did have this year was the, we called the Village Fest Birthday, it's our anniversary, and we hand out cookies and cupcakes and talk to people about Village Fest, tell them how long it's been there, and it's kind of a nice thing. We are planning to reinstate the Halloween costume contest and parade, which is a really great thing for families. It's, it's the cutest thing ever, I don't know if you've ever seen it. I especially enjoy being, being on the panel for that, for the, for the contest. Other programs that we intend to either add or reinstate are the youth art program. You might recall there were banners hanging along Palm Canyon with some artwork on it, and that was actually from our youth art, art program. The Village Fest poster art contest, we do use that for promotional reasons, but it does give Village Fest artists, local artists, and even youth artists an opportunity, again, to showcase their artwork and to compete. The annual birthday celebration, which I mentioned, and this year, we distributed over two thousand cupcakes, no, I'm sorry, over two thousand cookies this year, last year with cupcakes. May, may the fourth be with you, which is a Star Wars Day, is something that we're going to be doing as well, and more events to come. We're still kind of putting on our thinking caps for that. Future goals include expanding the footprint and appeal. We would love to see it all the way up and down Palm Canyon at some point, right? Sorry to all the merchants who, who we encroach upon during that time. Further diversifying the food offerings and the dining accommodations, we feel could really be something for locals and visitors, because it could be a place where, you know, I have plans with friends to go to dinner, hey, meet me at Village Fest, hey, have you seen this new vendor, let's try this food. One of the issues with that, because I've done it personally, is there is really inadequate seating and dining accommodation, and I really think that's something that we need to up. So, council, just fair warning, we may be coming before you for that at some point. And finding ways to partner with other boards and commissions and local events as well. I think, you know, it, because it's every week, it's there anyway, so anything else that happens knows that Village Fest will always be there on Thursday, so Pride Weekend, Thursday night is still Village Fest, right? However, I think we need to do a better job of that, honestly, and try to partner with the other commissions, especially the Sustainability Commission, because we do have food vendors, so they should really be using only sustainable plates and forks and knives and that. So, just in closing, the Village Fest popularity has not suffered as a result of COVID. In fact, outdoor venues are more desirable right now. So, we're seeing a resurgence. So we're seeing a resurgence. We have about, I'd say maybe eight to 10,000 people coming to Village Fest on a Thursday night in season, about four to six in the summer, which is even impressive because it's very hot there, right? And the board maintains really a lot of momentum, stamina, and that, that has enabled us to bring it back to where it is at least. And we're very happy with that, but we still endeavor to do more. Our current challenges really are jurying vendors on Zoom because we need to see, touch and feel the product, understand the quality. With the food vendors, they typically come and do tastings with us, so we understand the quality of their food. We've done a good job of, of dealing with the challenge through Zoom. A lot of my board members are, are getting antsy about that, but we understand the reason why we're doing it and so we're doing it for the right reasons and we just look forward to that changing at some point. And the evening meetings, ever since we went to that 5:30 schedule, there seems to be more of a contention of other meetings around the city. Like I was on the 1PS, I was a 1PS rep for my neighborhood and I can't go to those meetings because they, they're same time as Village Fest. So other people have mentioned that, I don't know if there's any review of that. I thought I heard on one of the council meetings that you were going to review the meeting schedules, but if you do, please do keep that in mind. And that's really what we're doing. Open any questions and sincere thanks for the privilege of all of your time this, this evening as well. And again, I'm not advancing the slides, apologies. Okay. Questions?
Daniel, thank you. Are there questions for Daniel? Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the end of all of our scheduled presentations. So I'd like to turn to my colleagues for any additional questions or comments that you may have. Mayor Protem.
I am interested in if there was one thing that you would change about your commission, what would that be? And I hope that you'll all think about that and email us and let us know. I know that we've, staff, city staff has engaged with all of you before about ways to improve commissions, but I am interested if there is that one little thing that, for each of you that would improve our commissions. But thank you so much for all of the work that you do and I am glad to see how many of the different commissions want to work together more. And I hope that we can help provide those spaces for commissions to get together and have joint meetings as needed. Sustainability in parks or whoever it is, really it seems like all of you mentioned each other at, at one point in your presentation. So thank you so much for all that you do and I hope to talk to you all more individually about what you're looking for.
Councilmember Coors.
Great. So question for staff, so what is the timing with filling vacancies on commissions? I know we've had some changes with city clerk's office, so I know that came up from a couple of folks.
Yeah, so one of the considerations is the likely reorientation of some of our commissions to smaller size. We would likely propose to council and commissions that that only happen through attrition of individuals that are termed out so that nobody is deprived of serving a second time. But most of those vacancies are within the number that would likely be reduced. So we would like to resume filling, kind of depending on that analysis and the final number.
Great. And I think when we do have that discussion, just to follow up, Mayor Protem, I think making, however we do it to have liaison so the commissions, you know, do have that communication, I know we did it with planning and sustainability years ago and it was really an effective way to work together. So everyone's working, you know, in a coordinated way on things that they have in common. I think that came across tonight, so really appreciate it. And other than that, it's just really appreciate everyone's work and I just think it's great for us and the public to hear all the amazing things that you're doing and that are happening in the city. So thank you all very much, it's really appreciated.
I want to thank absolutely everyone that's on the commission. I know your chair and in some cases a chair and a co-chair came up and spoke. I'd like to change that format in the future. It's each one of you, sitting in this room and even those not in this room, the talent that's in this city is incredible. The fact that you want to give back and improve your city and be civically minded is absolutely even more incredible. I want to thank every single one of you for that. We are working very hard as a council and as staff to make communication better between commissions and the council so that our, our recommendations and your recommendations receive all the respect it needs. You know, one thing, or the things that make a great community are, one, its history, of course, its social fabric, which we have very strong here, and its built environment, which we have an incredible built environment here. I would encourage us, the Parks Commission, Historic Site Preservation, ARC, the Planning Commission, to be strong, to really be strong. Because without you being strong there, we will become just another suburb. And I don't think that's what anybody that I know in this city wants. The only way we can do that is for all of you to be as strong as possible. And for the social fabric, you know, all the commissions that deal with the social fabric of inclusion and diversity to be strong as well. So I want to support you in all of that. I know at times it's very difficult when you have forces pressed against you, a developer that doesn't want to give you exactly what you want, you know, but it, you know, if we don't, we homogenize our city and I don't think that's any, anything anybody here wants. I would encourage you, one of the things that the council did when I came on board was moved everything to the evening to try and get more inclusion. I think we need to look if that really worked or not. If your commissions, look at your commissions, did you get more diversity? Did you get more participation from the public? I know it was hard from the, from the point of view of the pandemic, did it work or do we need to try something else? Because again, we want full participation, if the evenings aren't working and we have too many rooms booked, we need that feedback. So talk to staff who can talk to us. But thanks to Park and Rec, thanks to our library, thanks to everyone for making it an incredible city to live in, to play in and to work in. So I just really applaud all of you. And then what I hope in the future is that we either get little vignettes, little quick videos of the entire commission and/or a picture of all of you. I think it's important not just to have your chairman speak, but to acknowledge every single factor that goes in to making your commission strong. And I think it's a body and a group that does that and I think we need to acknowledge that as well. Thank you.
And thank you all. I took a lot of notes and I'm looking up here at my colleagues and all of us were taking an incredible number of notes as you were speaking. I said earlier, this is the first of what needs to be an ongoing conversation. So we're going to be reaching out to the city manager and we want to hear from you as to when it's appropriate for us to come back together for another meeting such as this and follow up. I was, thought I knew my city, yet I was impressed tremendously by the number of projects that each one of you talked about and the passion that shows in those projects. Some areas that I would like to hear and I think my colleagues would like to hear more is either individually or collectively, send us your recommendations regarding how we can improve not only the quality of the communications that go on between city council and your commissions, but most importantly, the timeliness of it so that you're hearing from us in a time that will help you in the decisions that you need to make and the recommendations that you need to make. I think we also need to hear from you in terms of how can we improve the quality of communications that goes on between our residents, our businesses and you as commissions and us as a city council. This was a really impressive evening tonight and I hope that we have a chance to do this again very soon. With that, is there anyone who, out there who thinks now there's something I needed to say and I have not had a chance to say it yet? I see a hand come up, please. Please come up to the, to the microphone.
I did a good job to introduce my board and I neglected to mention our staff who is incredible and does so much work for all of us. Faith Roach, who is our coordinator and Jasmine Waits, who is the Parks and Recs coordinator for us as well. Without staff, I don't think we could do the job that we do.
Hi, I'm Donna Shepard from Human Rights Commission.
Hi, Donna.
I found this document on our table, it's an agenda and it lists all the commissions and commissioners and it also has some challenges that the commissions have faced with some recommendations. And I think it would be really helpful if that could get emailed out to all of us so we can make an effort to get on the same page with resolving some of those issues because I think some of them are really right on. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think staff, I saw was moving on that. Anyone else that has something that you, you need, you want to say before we adjourn? Well, seeing no one, we will adjourn the meeting. We thank you, city council. The next regular city council meeting will be held at 5:30 on Thursday, June 30th and please be safe out there.